Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Selecting Meeting September 21st. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Warrants have been signed, so we're all set there. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve the agenda?
All second that? All in favor? Okay. Get an agenda. Minutes of the last meeting.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the minutes of September 7th and also September 14th.
Second that? All in favor? Okay. Town Administrators Weekly Update.
Okay, just a few things. First, as a reminder that we are going to an elections training tomorrow night, so the town clerk's office will be closed. Code enforcement is open as scheduled, but closed upstairs. Reminder that the drawing for Mary Grant tickets for the Court of Wood is, this is your last week, we have them on sale in our office. The drawing will be next Wednesday during your live meeting before your West Shore Drive public hearing.
Very good.
Other than that, I'll keep it a light agenda. Regarding West Shore Drive, tomorrow is also the deadline for the questions that you asked to be submitted in advance. Right now, I believe I've gotten three emails, so different questions.
So, one or two of those.
Yep. O'Donnell's notified me today that they have updated Kama and updated their website, so all of the assessing is up to date on O'Donnell's website. And, of course, the home link is on our page as well. So, it's your property information, tax information, current assessing as of the April 1st date.
How far along are they?
So, this is just for the current work, for the current tax bills, for the revow.
Oh, I see.
Nothing to do with the revow, but that's a good question. They're probably about 60 to 70 percent done of field work already. They're trying to get it all out so that this winter they can go back and organize and start working on numbers. And they'll certainly have public hearings and so forth when it gets closer.
Very good.
There's a link now on the town's homepage for absentee ballots for the November election, although they're not available yet. As soon as they become available, we will start mailing them out, but you can apply now. And lastly is, we need to have the general assistance maximums change every year according to the state property level. There have been some changes. There have been some changes this year, so you have to actually have a public hearing and adopt them. So, general assistance.
Can you give me the background on this?
Yep. In order to qualify for general assistance, you have to have so many in the household and not make more than X amount of money. Each year, the state looks at those guidelines to determine if they need to adjust anything. For example, they've increased the mileage. They've increased the funeral expenditure for York County. So, we have to have a public hearing to go over those changes. They have to be adopted, and then those are the guidelines that we follow when we have general assistance applications.
Who develops those guidelines? The state? So, this is just a hearing to?
Formality.
It's a formality.
To publish them?
Yes.
And get comment?
Right. If we don't follow the guidelines set by the state, right now, you get 50 percent reimbursement for any general assistance that you issue from the state.
The town does?
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't issued general assistance in years. We haven't given any out in years. 99 percent of the people that come to us for help don't qualify based on the guidelines. So, we assist through neighbors helping neighbors.
Okay.
So... We haven't had a general assistance in a long time.
So, you, does that mean you won't have that meeting, but you'll have it?
Oh, no, we'll have it. Because if somebody qualifies.
But you just won't use it?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, if someone qualifies, we always try to look to there first, but it's hard to qualify.
But it's unlikely to be used. Got it. Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. The Department Head Committee Chair Updates. I see the Fire Department is here.
Yes, I reached out to them, asked them to come last week. There was some public comment regarding the truck, and I thought it was a good time to also have them speak on the other equipment.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight just to give you a quick update on some of the equipment we have ordered, received, and stuff that's still pending. As of today, at about 1,400 hours, we placed our Lucas CPR device on the ambulance and in service. A bunch of us had training today over at the town in Newfield Fire Department. They received one as well. So, we did a joint training today to get it in service on the truck, and we'll follow up with the rest of our membership to get them up to board and able to use it. So, that's a huge plus. The next one, the Stryker power load, we're still waiting on parts for it to be installed. It's all the stuff backordered, just like anything else in the industry right now. It's a waiting game, so...
So, you got some of the parts, but not all of them?
We got one of the bracket pieces, but we're waiting on the rest. Comes in multiple boxes, so waiting on the rest of it for that.
Now, I know we paid for the Lucas. We haven't paid for the second one yet, correct?
Correct. And then, the long-awaited one, the fire truck, the tank truck. It is currently in production. It's been in production a couple of weeks now. So, I don't have a timeframe on estimated completion time yet. They're working on that to try to get it narrowed down to a rough idea, but right now, it's in production. They are currently working on it.
So, they have all the parts?
Yep.
They just have to assemble it?
To my understanding, yes.
And, okay.
They, the latest update I got was last week, and they installed the pump transfer case and everything on that side of it, so they're starting to build the body. It would be the next step, so...
Okay. Well, keep us posted, because people are curious about how that's going, so...
Absolutely.
Even just an email, if you get any updates, just send an email into Jennifer. We can just read it here.
Sure thing.
Let you want to come and talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure thing.
Great. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, are there any questions around that? Okay. Liaison updates. Oh, I'm sorry, another...
A little quicker. Will Langley, Wesley couldn't make it tonight, but she wanted me to just give you guys an update. We had a meeting on Monday night for West Shore Drive, and I think it was like a good hour and a half. We read word for word and everything, and I think we got like a dozen good questions for the engineer, and I think she sent them off to Jennifer, so... Oh, not yet. Well, she's going to be, so I think we did pretty good, so...
Actually, no, she did. I'm sorry.
I saw them.
I didn't know those were from the committee, my mistake.
Yes, I mean, I think it was like a dozen good questions for the engineer, so we're all set there, so...
Great. Was the engineer at your meeting, or was this?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Any other committee chair or department head updates? Joyce?
Hi, Joyce Backshea, Capital Improvement. We had our last, our first meeting of this new year last night, and liaisons to the different departments volunteered themselves, so we are ready to go forward. And we still would like more members. I know Jennifer, it's posted, but...
How many openings do you have?
We, right now, are four, and we would like to go up to five or six. The book that we're working from says as many as seven. So, as many as we can get is great. So, we're just four right now, plus our liaison. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Liaison updates. Warrant and Finance Committee is meeting next week, I believe, right? So, I'll attend that meeting? I'm sorry?
Monday.
Monday, yes. Yeah, that's next week. Okay. And Transfer Station, had a chance to talk a little bit with Robin today. I understand he and Will have met, and we're beginning to talk about some potential capital work down there, or site work, I should say, and hopefully we'll see something in the coming weeks about that for the committee to consider. Fire Department, is there anything on here about the Search Committee?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll just, let me, we had our first meeting of the Fire Chief Search Commission today. I thought it was a great meeting. There were, there are seven members of the committee, and one, two, three, four, five of them are veteran firefighters, so I think we've got good representation there. Three great people from the current Fire Department and two additional. I think the committee is pretty well organized. We're gonna make our work as quickly as possible, but we know it's an important search, and we're gonna take, do what we have to do to make sure we get a good selection there. Capital Improvement, I attended the Capital Improvement Committee last night, I guess it was last night, and they're off to a great start. Kim?
Let's see here, Rec Committee, I spoke with Samantha this week. She's got some ideas and things she needed us to talk about. I don't know, should we talk about that now, or? She had a request. When they do the round robin at the school, she wants to know if she can have a food truck and the ice truck again, the Kona Ice. Now, I know we'd probably have to ask Mr. Ross first off if that's okay.
What's the school's gonna do?
And she did say she spoke with him, but I would...
Are there, are they getting, is the town receiving revenues? So, we're not worried about insurance of his property, or something he did that?
Is this like a field day or something, a round robin?
It's the round robin's the soccer, where they're getting all, all the different teams together, and they play each other.
Acting teams? Or other towns, or?
I can't say 100 percent.
It's other towns.
Usually, it's other towns.
It's kind of like, they're doing the same thing as they normally do down in Sanford. They invite a bunch of towns from the surrounding area, and they'll usually play at multiple fields. And so, I think that's kind of what they're doing.
Is it a rec department event, or a school department?
It's a rec.
So, she's doing it as a rec thing, but she didn't feel there that the field up there was gonna be suffice for...
Simply using a...
So, I'd say anything that deals with food trucks. The food truck thing, there's two things. We gotta make sure that the school is fine with it.
Right.
Anything on there, it's town property, but still it's school.
Right.
Whatever. And, I mean, the proceeds, I don't know how that's gonna work out.
Well, they had the ice, they did use that ice truck here when they had the event in the parking lot that didn't remember, and all the money went to the food pantry. I don't know, and she did say that they, they make, both make donations. She hadn't worked anything out with the food truck, last I heard. But I guess I'm not sure if, you know, normally we would check on insurance, we would go through a protocol if it's here.
Absolutely.
If we let John handle that, not to overstep.
Yeah.
Well, right, if it's gonna be held.
Because it's on the school property.
John, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said John.
But, you know, we need to know, you know, we need to have some sort of figuring out what kind of, you know, if the ice truck makes $500, there needs to be a receipt that we made $500 in here.
So, I think we're better off.
And are we even?
It's, it's kind of sticky, because we don't know who the food truck is, or whatever.
It's the same one you authorized, the Canoco Ice.
But I think we'd be better off, just, you know, if they're gonna be at our event, be like, like any affair would do, just give a base rate. They're gonna pay like $300.
That's right. It's like a rent.
Now, we don't have to worry about how much money they brought in. It's one base rate. We don't worry about the accountant part of it. It's done.
So, and they need to show liability insurance?
Yeah, we still have to do that.
So, how do we figure out how much that is?
How much what?
How much you're gonna charge them to be at, because they're gonna make money, the food truck and the ice truck. So, how much you charging them to be there that day?
Something like that.
I, I, I would handle it as a negotiation. I, that's how...
Well, we'll see what they'll give us. You know, it's more or less, the, the charge isn't really to make money on it.
They're gonna want to give you a percentage.
It's just to put it, yeah, it's just to put it, well, you don't want to do a percentage of the proceeds, because we don't know what the proceeds is gonna be. So, what you do is, pretty much what the, whatever the rent spot will be, is pretty much just, that's what's going back to the rack.
No, I agree, but I would find out how many, how many people are gonna be there.
Okay.
And I'd talk to the vendor and say, "Look, we're gonna have 300 kids here." And parents, two?
Yes, absolutely.
And said, "So, how much you willing to pay to bring your truck on site?" And negotiate with them. That's what I would do, but...
I mean, if they're gonna do, say, they're gonna do, you know, a thousand dollars' worth of sales, and they're gonna give 25 cents of the proceeds, it's 250 bucks.
Well, he ought to be able, he or she ought to be able to do that in their ad.
Have an idea.
Say, "Well, tell me how you got with that number." And, you know, you just kind of dig at it, and...
Even it's not, even it's not a big number. It's just something to go back.
Get something back, so we aren't just giving it away. Yeah. So, are you gonna handle that?
Him and I will.
Okay.
The liaison.
Great.
So, Will, I don't believe that event is until the end of, is it, do you know when that event is?
It's the end of the month.
End of, not September?
No.
October.
I think it's October.
So, we'll come back to next week with what their proposal is.
I'll get it, yeah. Yep. Something else I wanted to ask.
What are we, where are we?
She's finishing her lead.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
School, I'll meet with them next month, the beginning of the month. And I did see Mr. Ross last week. He said things were going well, start of school and stuff, but I'll go to their meeting in October. And then, maybe I'll have a little bit more to bring back there. APAT, I met with him recently, but nothing new, nothing to update there. And same thing with the Cemetery Committee, they don't meet until, I think it's the 4th of October.
Yeah, second, I think they're at the second Tuesday, first or second Tuesday of each month. It's on the website.
So, I'll go to that, and then bring back what I learned there.
Mr. Wenchel?
Roads and Road Committee. I'm with the Road Committee. It wasn't last night.
Monday.
Monday night. Yeah, losing track of days, I guess. I think it was a pretty good meeting. I do want to thank the Road Committee for doing what we requested. I think it worked well. And, you know, they had a lot of conversation, listened to a lot of questions, and I think it was, it was good, so...
Great.
And I don't have anything on code enforcement or Mary Grant or Forest Conservation as we speak.
Great. What a bits.
So, the, a couple of, we've spoken to a couple of different consultants that have no interest in this job whatsoever, or have any interest in whatever dynamic, whatever direction we go in, so we wanted to start making that clear. It's a couple of different, different companies that we've reached out. They're agreeing at this point that it's possible that you might only need to do a softener for the iron hardness and magnes, and you could possibly lower the price by almost a third. They're willing to help write RFPs and maybe consider going back out to bid, and neither one of their professional opinions do we need a full osmosis system. Now, knowing very little short of what they've educated with me over the last few weeks, I mean, that's, that's your call. I've got some emails that I really prefer not to read out.
No, no, it's appropriate, yeah.
That, to, you know, I'd like you to look at more as to why they wouldn't go in different directions, but I would ask to table it one more week, and I'll meet with you individually and kind of show them to you and see if we can come up with another plan.
Okay. Well, if we can get significant savings and, you know, downsize this and get something that really meets our needs, I think that's great.
We don't have to go with a reverse osmosis.
No.
The maintenance on that sucks.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Jennifer. New business, draft warrants. I guess you have given us something on this?
Yep, so this is a draft. We want to put a draft together so that the Warrant and Finance have something to actually vote on Tuesday, or Monday, I'm sorry. So, in the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Acton qualified to vote in Town Affairs to assemble at Acton Town Hall on Tuesday, November 8th at 8:00 a.m. to act in the following articles. It's a local election, so you still need a moderator to oversee the polls. Article 2, which is non-binding regarding the future of Acton's annual town meetings, which form of government, which form of voting do you prefer? As you'll see, there's a place for the Select Board recommendation and the Warrant and Finance. Article 3 is the received by petition, going from 3 to 5. I won't read it again, because I know we read it last week. And then, 4 is the transfer of $100,000 for the LED. So, just looking for, you know, you to proof it, we've copied and pasted the question. It's a pretty basic draft. I think it's correct. Need to talk about when you guys want to think about making your recommendations in the past, and this is always up, up to you. On school articles, it's normally been the Warrant and Finance and the School Committee make a recommendation. There's certainly enough room if you want to put a third, a Select Board recommendation, but you'll notice that's not on there. But it is your warrant. I've always recommended you put one on there, but...
I would think you would. Is there some reason why we don't?
I think it'd be a good idea.
I think we should on all.
So, we have public hearing scheduled for October 5th? October 5th? Do you want to, as you look at these articles, are you ready to make recommendations?
When's the Warrant and Finance Committee gonna take these up?
Monday.
So, the first step, Dennis, please, yeah. The first step would be for them to take it up?
Not necessarily. I mean, they don't, they're gonna make their own decision. I mean, yours may or may not be based on, you know, your separate committees.
I'd kind, personally, I would like to hear what they have to say about it after they reviewed it, but...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, hopefully, Monday night, the people that are pushing to have these warrant articles for us to do, like the school.
Now, have you, have you invited, I'm sorry not to interrupt, but have you personally invited the petitioner, the school, and the town, I guess, because they would be the non-binding?
I haven't officially the town, but I have officially the petitioner and the school. And fact is, John asked if we could deal with a school warrant first, for obvious reasons. You know, he has a long ways...
Oh, okay.
...to travel, you know, so...
Guess that's your call.
Yeah, we're gonna take, we'll take it out of order. And, and hopefully, any questions that anybody has, the people that want to do this, will be there to answer them.
And then you guys, so if you want, you've got your public hearing on October 5th. Do you want to wait and make your recommendations after you hear what the public says, or?
Who, who would you, who, not to interrupt, but who would you suggest, or maybe all of you, I don't know, would come from the town?
Yeah. I would make it an open invitation to the full board, since they unanimously, three to, put it on there, so...
Okay, I, I officially invite the whole committee now.
I mean, Tom's the liaison, but to have, you know what I mean, they may have different opinions on it, so...
I think the full board should be invited, because we have different opinions on it, so that would be good.
Well, you are officially invited.
I'm sorry?
You are officially invited.
That's Monday.
Monday. At 6:00.
Okay.
It's being perfect.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
I, I don't believe that we should be making a recommendation, don't we?
I'm sorry, David?
I, I'd like to make the recommendation after our public hearing.
I agree.
Me too.
Yes. So, we'll hold on. When do we have to have it done?
Well, I mean, we, we don't have to, I mean, the recommendations have to go on the ballots. So, you're gonna, okay, October 5th.
October 5th?
After your public hearing, it's gonna be on the agenda, because absentee ballots have to be available 30 days before the election.
So, and the public hearing is when?
October 5th.
So, we have to have our recommendations?
You're gonna have them that night.
That night.
So, you'll have your public hearing, then when you go into your regular meeting.
Okay. It'll work for everyone?
Yeah, so we'll hear from everybody, then we'll go to that meeting and make a decision.
Looks like a thumbs up.
So, that, just, you know, so absentee ballots have to be available October 7th, so that's gonna give your clerk's office a day to create ballots and...
Is that enough time?
Yeah.
All right.
Seriously.
Well, I mean...
Or do you, should we do it the week?
No, I mean, you, you have to wait for the public hearing. I get that. I mean, it goes on the ballot. We'll...
Yeah, I just think it'd be best that we do it to the public hearing, so it doesn't look like, you know, I mean, we may figure out different information or whatever, so...
Okay. We'll have them ready.
Okay. Are you talking about this topic?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I have clarification on the dollar amount? I thought, I heard you say $100,000.
So, Article 4 is to see if the town will, town of Acton will vote to transfer $100,000 from the school's undesignated funds to the school's designated capital improvement reserve account for the purpose of upgrading to LED lighting throughout the school.
I thank you.
Okay. Any other comment on this before we go on? Okay.
So, if you can just peruse it and make sure there's no typos or anything in there, we'll release it to Warrant and Finance.
I'll do my best to prove it. Okay. It's not my best skill set. Draft warrant, appointments.
No, no, because you're not, nope. Appointment, this, in front of you, you have an appointment for Mike Demers as a deputy code officer. You guys had some conversation about it last week and wanted a chance to discuss hourly rates and so forth.
All right, so we need to talk about the hourly rate before we make a motion, right? Is that what you're saying?
That was what you guys said last week, so...
I believe this is, let me try to summarize it. This is an appointment as a deputy code officer. Mike Demers has served in this capacity in the past?
He's served as the code officer.
No, but he was also as deputy, or, yeah, as deputy. So, this is a as-needed position. There are no assigned hours, but as, as Jason feels the need, or vacation, or workload, whatever, he can call on Mike to do that. And so, the rate of pay would be $35 an hour?
$35 an hour is what he was currently making.
Okay, so...
When he came in and covered for us when we were in that period there.
I think that also, just, there's no benefits here, so when you think about a code officer, and he's a fully functioning code officer, I think to get someone at this rate absent the benefits is a, is a very reasonable deal.
He's a good asset for the town of Acton. He's a pretty good asset for the town of Acton.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, do you want to make a motion? All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the certificate of appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Michael Demers. And we want the selectmen of the municipality of Acton to do so in accordance with the provisions[1460.66] of the Lord of the State of Maine, hereby appoint you as Deputy Code Enforcement Officer within for the municipality of Acton until 12/31/2022.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, thank you. Goat Hill, Three Rivers request. Have we got someone speaking to this, or you? All right.
So, Tom, one piece that I want to make sure that you know is, the board, probably a year or so ago, signed a maintenance agreement with Three Rivers, which essentially allowed them to oversee the project and that, on behalf of the town of Acton. So there is an agreement in place that Three Rivers handles Goat Hill, if you will. They update us, and they come to us with anything, but it's really their baby and their project, so they, they oversee it for us. So he came to me today with, with two items. After going back and forth on one of them, he's withdrawn that until he can get more information. Second is, they are asking for permission to put a sign up that says all dogs must be leashed, period. They're having trouble, state law says that your dog has to either be on leash or within verbal command. The ACO was actually here today writing up some summons, and we, so Carl Davis and I had a conversation with him, he completely supports it. There's been a couple of issues up there with unleashed dogs, he just wants your support. All dogs must be leashed.
I think it's a good idea.
There's nothing wrong with that, yeah.
Any concerns with that?
No, I don't have any concerns. I mean, it's a good idea.
Liability reasons, I would think it'd be something...